All right, we're called to order. The May 22 Board of Commissioners work session continued discussion of the proposed fiscal year budget. It's the only item on the agenda, motion to adopt the agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
First up, Greg and team have been doing a lot of look see, hip a clicker, at the activity out on various social medias, et cetera, and wanted to at least put a place in the ground as to what this, our budget really was trying to highlight, to try to clear up confusion that may or may not be out there, or seemingly out there. And it was a combination of Greg, Lisa, myself, trying to put this together, just try to get a foundation for today to move forward. So. All right, so no surprises in terms of what is the general funds, what it does, what it's supposed to do on page two. What's the highlight of this budget as explained to by the manager and the finance director? Bottom line, it's a 3% decrease in operating expense while in their view maintaining and improving service and service quality. And I specifically asked, how many services do we offer? We're over 20 when you look at what we do. Was in the body of the document, but in there is the money for continuation of the comprehensive growth plan program. We will complete the UDO, we will modernize the town ordinances, we will analyze and repurpose the town's property assets, and also in here is the implementation of expansion of comprehensive funding and financial model. Quality of life services, the Parks and Rec Master Plan, Community Engagement Work Plan that we've been talking about since January, and then basically look at our priorities, which we've talked about in any number of ways. I'm not trying to put value one way or the other, but it's roadway traffic congestion, the upfit of our parks, facility shortfalls, and what can or can we not do, but those are some of the priorities. They did this in context of the citizen survey for mid-year 2017. You see the satisfaction areas, the citizens gave us the areas to improve, traffic flow and congestion, certainly parks, the number, the quality, were on the list, no question about it. The citizenry and the residents felt we had the right amount of services, but would you please work on traffic flow congestion? As part of that, the maintenance of the streets and the parks. I think there's one thing that we have, was not in there, but I went back through minutes and coverage, and as far back as March of 2017, the message from the board, from the manager was, our current tax base will cover operation and upkeep through 2018. That's where we then would have a challenge, and we would have to begin to address through the calendar year, how we pay for the growth, past growth challenges, our immediate needs, and commitments to our future. Since then, in talking with Lisa, our residential tax base is now 93%, commercial 7%, that's up from 90% a year ago. We all know that our residential tax base, for every dollar, they consume more than a dollar in services, which is, which is fine, that's the way we designed it. Town policy prohibits, and it's a good policy that this board adopted, prohibits the continued use of reserve fund to cover operating shortfall. Another aspect that the chief has consistently reminded us of, in terms of, we do have an 11 to 12 square mile area, we cover plus one in our service agreement with the county, and we are the first safety organization to respond 99.9% of the time. It's because we're here. That does place an additional burden on the town and the budget, because they do have to cover it, and then they do consume more resource time as they do the transition to the county, when the county decide, can get there, decides based upon their coverage and where people are, when they can get there. And current services, along with the necessary and desired investment, require funding sources. The manager and the finance director identified three things, solid waste transportation, parks. Some factoids, we manage 62-plus miles of roads, with 42 of them that we own ourselves. That management includes congestion management, which Greg had highlighted, and Lisa had highlighted, small transportation projects, and the maintenance repair and or replace. Just a little point of clarification, there was a transportation summit meeting Saturday to educate Western Union County on transportation. We qualify and are getting regional funds, we qualify for state transportation and investment funds, that's how 16 is being paid for. We do cover, are covered through spot safety, that's how five intersections along Newtown Road, as well as our grape byram, will get funded over, over the course of the next several months. And then we manage, manage the rest, as well as manage the 42 miles we own. Planning recommendations, which we were alerted to two years ago, that, and when this hits, nobody knows, but you should plan for to repair three to four miles a year, replace a mile a year. The industry cost standards are up on the chart, six, five to 600, we tend to pay more because we're, we don't bid as high of a figure, and it's tough to get bidding. So for a two-lane road, it's roughly 600K a mile, and to replace, it's about two and a half million a mile for a two-lane, and that has a budget impact that Greg and Lisa were trying to weave into this, this year. To open the Waxaw Fields Downtown Park, 34 acres, went back to the NC State numbers, and if you, and to open things responsibly, we're talking operating expense and capital in significant dollars. Want to make something real clear, I got a call from the CEO from the YMCA today. They're very upset that somebody's out there starting a rumor that they're pulling out a wax saw. They have no intention to pull out a wax saw, whoever started the rumor, whoever's passing it on, it got back to the Y, and they're very upset about it. CEO Todd Tibbetts called to reassure that they're working their plan, they called the sponsor, Tommy Hall, and made sure he was aware that that was false, and we moved forward. And I'll talk about later, we got a letter about the Masonic Lodge, whether or not we want to do that, that's a board decision, but it's going to take a sizable chunk of change and some operating costs to operate a center like that. These numbers may seem high, but I can tell you in seven years' experience on the planning board and on the Board of Commissioners and as mayor, we've never hit a low number that we budgeted that I recall in, in history. We tend to, because of where we sit, the number tends to come in higher. So we use the industry standards as a, as a means to show it. The, what Lisa and Greg have been suggesting back last August, obviously kicked it into high gear in, in the January timeframe at our retreat, is that we begin to identify, do we want to move away from a pay-as-you-go model, which is where we are today, and that's why that's a black line, to investing more, gathering more dollars and putting into reserve funds, so we have it for a capital budget, and then perhaps going out to borrow and/or bond in the 2019 timeframe, and then we would have a debt payment. We have a small debt payment now, we're paying for the police department. So in general, what this base budget that Greg and Lisa presented, just as a starting point, $10 million, $10.5 million in base operating, potential strategic needs as well as existing capital equipment needs, another million point one, for a total budget of 11,606. He recommended a decrease in our operating budget, he recommended revenues to offset the sanitation expense and allow for transportation investments. Just to be clear, he recommended, and Lisa recommended fees, could have been implemented via tax increase, and now we're here today, just to pause a minute, and if you do it, if we did it via tax increase, every penny generates about $186.5,000 in revenue. So we're here today to go through these questions, one at the bottom, one of, and I think it's been, been very helpful, a number of questions have been asked, what is it compared to, what is it, you know, who's doing sanitation or solid waste fees, et cetera. And I think as a board, we really need to give the manager direction as to how do we want to go forward as a benchmark, so we have consistent benchmarking. That, that is the role of the manager, and it was something that Mr. Wood had said we weren't ready two years ago, because we didn't have enough of the data captured, but we probably are ready at this point, or we should at least work with the manager on that. With all that said, that's the baseline for all the confusion that was out on social media. As an aside, all these things are audited on an annual basis, so I would encourage all those folks that have said this budget and finances have been mismanaged for the last five years, to please bring that forward to Greg, so we, so we can go back through the audit and see where this management allegedly has occurred. I don't know of any, but that said, we are all ears and open to any and all suggestions in that regard. We do have one item of an administrative matter, first and foremost, to get the budget discussion going. Last week, we got a letter from the Museum of the Waxhaws, and Greg and Lisa need guidance. Do we want to, do we want to allocate $30,000 of our direct cost in exchange for some services that we may be able to generate from the museum, some partnership agreement? This came in late, Greg, do you want to explain it?
There was direction from the board last year to work on contractual arrangements with some of the organizations that in the past had exchanged goods and services with the town, and to move away from a special appropriation type model. The first of those, as you recall, was the Women's Club, and there was an existing agreement there that involved the parking and involved usage of the building, and we were able to combine those into one agreement, it was multiple years, it reduced the writing what the exchange of services and goods was to be. And so that model was a model that we were working toward with other parties, most notably the Museum of the Waxhaws. Over the course of numerous months, Dina and I have met with the leadership of the museum and talked about a couple different issues. One, being what their desires are long-term for public usage and events hosted at the facility, whether in conjunction with the town or with others, what that vision on their end looks like, and then also what the town needs could consist of over time. So, open dialogue, most recently, they've indicated that they're open to several things, including usage of some of the space, given an agreement with the town, accommodation of the thread trail on the property, and then some, some events from time to time on the site. The discussion also included the ongoing maintenance of the facility, and maintenance, meaning the grounds maintenance, so the mowing of the grass, the light maintenance of the exterior, things like blowing and mulching. That had been done previously, previously by Public Services Department staff on a frequent basis, and so there was a dollar figure that was discussed, to put some order of magnitude, to kind of what that might be worth, and then to try to turn that into, is there an equivalent usage by the town of space? How do we quantify that and move that forward to the board, for the board to consider whether the board wanted to have that same arrangement? So the letter that you received basically used a dollar figure that's generally what the value of that service over time had been on an annual basis, and I would say that that number had fluctuated by year, so there are years where it may have been slightly different, but that was a ballpark number, but no one's exactly tied to that figure because it has moved around. The question that they posed was, is the town willing to resume that activity, meaning public services, mowing and maintaining the grounds there? And they utilized the letter as an opportunity to say they were willing to host town activities and events, depending on our desire to enter into some sort of agreement.
Questions?
Sure.
Commissioner Burn?
I think what you're attempting to do is admirable. I still have a couple fundamental questions with the Museum of the Waxhaws, and they have been there for a couple of years. I have been told, I haven't seen their new mission statement, but originally it was to, the wording was to promote knowledge of Andrew Jackson and the early European settlers, which I found did not include, you know, Native Americans, did not include African-Americans, free or slave. It just was, and there were, at that time, that was also reflected on their board. The other thing that bothered me was the fact that they were not, at that time, this was two years ago, really paying much attention to how they ran their finances, and I was told that that's not our business, but I also was told by my mom when I was a little kid, you're judged by the company that you keep. And I think, again, working out a partnership with them would be good, but those fundamental questions, in my mind, need to be answered, you know?
Are we in need of additional space for events?
Currently, the, the space needs are, are being achieved in, of several locations. We believe that if we had space long-term, we could utilize it. We don't need the space that we initially discussed with the museum, because the programming efforts are not what they might be. So in the short term, we're not proposing that we are hosting anything there. Longer term, that there might be more opportunity for that. But there are, there are facilities that will be available for hosting events, but long-term, long-term, we will need space, but this year, we really are not focused on that particular facility.
Okay, and so when we did the nonprofits, when they had to fill out the applications, and then they had to provide their financial statements, so kind of going back to what Commissioner Burn said, are they refusing to show any type of financial statements for that?
The, the museum did not, or was not requested to provide an application this year for that special appropriation process. There was an ongoing conversation as far as a contract, so they weren't involved in the, in the process as other organizations would be, so we don't have that information. Last year, I don't believe we had what was necessarily requested, so that would be under last year, though.
Were we required on the Women's Club, contractual arrangement in the parking?
We did not.
Okay. That's what this would compare to, right? Questions?
I have, I have a couple of concerns with this. I do agree with Commissioner Burn on some of the educational type things, more for a social type situation, and for me, it's kind of personal, but I know that I can't bring personal into this job, but it's kind of hard to do, as having very close family who are Native American, and I am part Native American, and tax dollars going there, and as manager Ferguson stated, that we may need space in the future, but right now, so in the future, I say that we put the tax dollars toward our parks, not toward a museum that is a nonprofit. So my opinion is no.
I too agree with Commissioner Burn and Commissioner Burns. I did see their mission statement, I don't know if it has changed since earlier this year, but it did not address a number of things that, or people, Native Americans, African-Americans, but it was not inclusive of everyone in the town. I don't know what their board makeup is totally, but that too was not inclusive of the reflection of the diversity of the town. They did address concerns with the program, I think that we hosted there last year, which was maybe an Easter event or something, with the number of people who were on the grounds, or the number of people who were inside, not knowing if that would come up again with them, or how it would be handled, but they felt that that was problematic, that they didn't have the facility to hold the number of people that were there. Those issues, and then the fact that it's not something that we do need at this moment, and if we do have other options, or if we take these funds and put it towards, you know, recreation center or parks for our town, I think that money would be wise to spend in that area.
Correct me, this would be allocating of current dollars, in essence, in terms of resources and services? It's not money we have sitting aside? It would be, using an example, take Todd, and whatever he does today, 30,000 of him goes towards the museum, if we honor it, right?
It's the cost of the service provided.
Right.
But the costs are being utilized elsewhere currently.
We'd in essence be taken away from the services we provide today to receive something we don't need right now.
Or potentially adding overtime costs to our budget to accomplish what we already need to accomplish for the town.
That's right. Commissioner Burn?
Yes, I'd like to add one thing. I know that you and your predecessor, Mr. Wood, have taken a lot of steps to affect a partnership with the Museum of the Waxhaws, and I commend you for that. I don't think I have seen the reciprocation of the efforts from the Museum of the Waxhaws, because these concerns that were expressed here today have been expressed for the last two to three years, and, you know, keep doing the good job you are, keep looking forward to the future, but it's kind of up to them to meet you halfway.
I think you have consensus on no implementation at this time. Okay. Greg, what are some of the other things that you want to make sure we get at today before we go to the, the board?
What, one is actually kind of housekeeping, but we did send out today, this afternoon, a response to about three or four questions that had come in in the last number of days. Those are mostly centered around the, the Main Street Advisory Board and its function, the costs associated with facade grant, and the costs of an item that I believe was related to communications for elected officials. In summary, the, the Main Street Advisory Board items, specifically the facade grant, was an item that is not required, but is utilized by, I believe it was 81 of 88 of the Main Street communities. There's no requirement as to dollar figure, that information should be in your email as far as what those amounts are. The other item had to do with communications, and so the response there details the future communication needs for the town attorney, and so that information is there as well. Those, we've been able to meet with several of the board members individually and answer some individual questions that they might have had, so I thought those meetings were productive, and I thank each of you for making time to do that. We're here to answer questions today and provide any additional information that's needed.
Questions?
It's not a question, but this is a comment, and when, when you mentioned facade grant, the first committee I served on in Waxaw was the Historical Preservation Commission, and that's when the facade grants were being introduced. And I have watched it from that perspective, from the planning board's perspective, and from here, and I have watched it improve each year, and when I say I've seen it improve, I'm going to apply this to a lot of other things that have happened. We began to treat it with sort of a cost-benefit approach. At first, it was just money, kind of trying to induce people to do something, and not a real hard look at it, but over the years, I've seen a harder and harder look at the things on which that has been spent, and that pattern I see in the budget today, where we're looking at things And that pattern I see in the budget today, where we're looking at things much more carefully. Are we perfect? No. Are, is there room for improvement? Absolutely. But we're moving in a better direction. We're continually improving how we monitor the town's funds, resources, and everything else, and, and I look forward to, you know, next year also, and to see how we have improved next year over this year, so.
Is there any reason we couldn't use the facade grant for the Niven Price building, our own building, to clean that up?
No, and that's actually our recommendation, is that the town really consider that this year as being one of the primary examples of how to utilize the money. It just is, in this case, the public owns the building. That would potentially prep a future decision as to the long-term disposition of the property, but that absolutely would qualify, would be legitimate, and would almost, not almost, it would set a leadership tone for other properties downtown.
Okay. Thank you.
Are we going in a direction, or?
Yeah, we'll just scoot this way.
I only have a comment. If, if the budget is approved tonight, I still would like-
Budget won't be approved tonight.
I'm sorry, sorry, public hearing, what, anyway. That going forward, that we look into some of the other, like, events, I'd like to dig deeper after this budget process goes through and get some reports from some of the departments such as events, downtown, Parks and Rec, some dip, just if we could start hearing a little bit more from each department to see if there's some ways we would want to adjust the budget going forward.
And one of, the reason that, how, how shall we benchmark in the future, that really gets to that point of how do you really want to compare yourself to whatever you want to compare yourself to? We're kind of all over the map right now. I think we're at a point with, with Lisa's leadership and Greg's leadership that we can do that and start to compare and, and contrast, and also ask ourselves a question. Is this, given Wax, we've done this for so many years, is this what Waxaw needs now? I mean, is it time to, time to change? So completely understand and agree. Commissioner Lee?
Uh, yes, a little comments. I considered it my job to go through this budget line by line, ask about what I don't understand, and make recommendations. I am here tonight with recommendations for cuts on places that I feel we can save money, money that we can put towards things that we need. We spend $17,200 paying our volunteers $25 a meeting for every meeting they attend on a volunteer committee. I personally feel that we have an amazing base of passionate, willing volunteers in this town. I would recommend that we suspend that payment for a year as a test period and see how it works. If, if people decide that they don't want to volunteer, if they don't get paid $25 and they quit, let's see if there are enough volunteers to fill those spots. If that becomes a problem, then we can revisit it next year, but I would like to see us cut that for a year, put it on suspension, and see how it affects the state of the town. That's not much in the grand scheme of things, but that's $17,200, and every little drop adds up. In the questions, in the email that Greg sent out earlier, and I will say I'm the one who asked about, there's a line item for $3,100 for training for downtown businesses. The email described it as advertising training, sponsorships to Chamber of Commerce events. Our downtown businesses are thriving, and not to, you know, beat a pun here, but there are no free lunches. If these businesses feel it's beneficial to them to attend a Chamber of Commerce event, they can pay for their own ticket. If we are at the point where we are raising fees and considering raising taxes, we need to be tightening the belt. I don't think we need to do that, $3,100 more. We have a $30,000 budget for beautification, which is, as I understand it, landscaping all over town, its trees, its pine straw, its maintenance of all the green spaces and things around town. $30,000 is a big number. I know that they use every penny of it, but I also know if there was, if there were less pennies, they'd find a way to make do. I'd like to see us cut maybe $5,000 out of that and see how that affects us. I'm happy with shifting the facade grant to the Niven Price Building for a year, that's great. Personally, I would like to see us discuss the possibility of selling the Niven Price Building and potentially the corner lot. These were purchased for investment properties. We are now at a high in the market that will not last forever. If we, to give an example, if we sell the Niven Price Building and/or the, and the corner lot, we will not need to then spend $25,000 on Urban Land Institute to tell us we should sell them if we've already sold them. We will not have to spend $7,000 on property management for property we don't own, and we will generate maybe $2 million or more in profits. That's money that could instantly be earmarked, that could open the downtown park for us. It could open the 34-Acre Park, too. It could put a down payment or, or a good chunk of money, several hundred thousand dollars, towards the land that we need for public services. These are strategies, and this doesn't even touch the fact that we have an events budget that is $198,250. I agree with Ms. Westlake that that's a large number, and we need to look at it. I would prefer to look at it now and not kick the can down to next year. I'm aware from speaking with our town manager that any events, given their lead time and planning, the earliest events we could realistically scale would be springtime. I'd like to see some proposals from events on how we could scale those events back. Or do they feel they would recommend removing smaller events? Some way that we could bring that nearly $200,000 down. That is two hun, almost $200,000 for events and not a penny put towards opening any of our unused parkland that we already own. So those are just, you know, my recommendations on things we could cut, ways we could save, tighten our belt, and get some new revenue.
Good. Thank you. We'll come, we'll come back to all those because I think, I want to see everybody weigh in on this and give staff. Commissioner Burns?
I want to start out with thanking the Manager Ferguson for meeting with me on Friday and going through the budget, answering my questions, clarifying a lot of things that was unclear. And I will respond to some of those things that we talked about. One of the things that we talked about was the facade grant of putting that to the Price-Niven's building to bring that up to standards for historic facade, and then placing that possibly on the market to sell that property and keeping some of the parking spaces to whomever buys that, and then the rest of the parking space as far as town-owned property for parking. Also, the use of the corner lot, we discussed to possibly think about the best use of that is to sa, is to sell that, whether it's this year or next year, or whenever we get the most out of that with the usage that is there now and possibly a year or two down the way. I agree with that. I think that's a great idea. Also, putting some of that money, and we could, as a board, it's always here, that's a board decision, that's a board decision, well, here we are. I think that that money could be restricted fund for parks, restricted part of it for parks, both of our big chunks of land, part of it to even help with the public services, knowing that public services does need a facility. I agree with that, but that's a lot of money to go into to borrow. What's one, what is it, $1.1 million, Greg? I would like to see us not have to borrow money if we don't have to. I can probably go through this budget another 100 times and find some more money, but we're at a point where we need to make decisions and move forward. It's so important, and I, and I'm going to say this again, and I've said it for two and a half years, it's so important for the people of this town to have a place to go. I talk to many people over and over again. They get in their cars in the mornings, and they drive to Wesley Chapel to, to walk in the park where it's, where it's safe and there's not traffic. They drive to Pineville, they drive to Matthews, they drive to Charlotte Freedom Park and Park Road Park to walk, to have their picnics, to take their kids. Many, many, many people. I think it's a sad situation, and I understand the money side of it as well, but I think we need to really work on that. And I think when we discussed, Greg, when we discussed also the events piece, where we could tighten the belt of things, of scaling back. I'm not talking about getting rid of everything, as some social media, what do I call them, Steve?
Alleged friends.
Anyway, sorry about that. I think that scaling back on some of those, some of the things, I think, well, there's 19, correct? 19 that we do? Some of the ones that we have kind of gotten into because it's the right thing to do, it's the nice thing to do, but it's costing the taxpayers money, and we don't have money to do other things as far as streets, roads, maintenance, so we, we're looking at going up on fees so we can bring that money in. Doesn't make sense to me, when we can cut back on other things and still bring the entertainment for, for the people and in different areas. The four major events that we have, I think we can scale back on all of those. That would be something that I would request you and your, your Parks and Recs Director and, and Events Manager to come back to us as a board and say, this is where we recommend, like you and I talked. I won't go into all of the things that we talked about unless you want me to, but those areas where we talked about, you could cut back, and even in the main events. So I would request that you come back with, with the help of your staff and give that information to the entire board of your recommendation of where we can cut back on those. And I understand that, as you explained, you need to make those decisions a long time beforehand on some of these because the staff are having to engage the vendors and different people months and months ahead of time. So I think it's imperative that we make that decision now, ongoing for the ones that are coming this fall and wintertime. So I, I would request that, to bring that information back to the boards, those suggestions, and some of the things that we talked about.
Are you pro-tending?
Okay. Well, I too met with our town manager, Mr. Ferguson, to address some of the various concerns that have already been stated, and I'm just going to go through four of the things. Of course, it was the events, we did talk about the events, and scaling back and how to handle that moving forward. I think it was my understanding from you that with some of the events being already planned months in advance, that things have already been allocated within this budget, correct me if I'm misstating it, but that we can do that even with the passage of this budget in scaling back or cutting things, moving forward within the next calendar year. Is that more or less correct?
Yeah, I think the, the realization is that the, the calendar for this year was established in December-January timeframe, so we have a number of events that are programmed for this year up through Christmas. We also have with the pending approval of the budget, the funding that would go from July 1 to June 30. So the context is if there is to be substantive changes that would affect, say, events, and I think somebody mentioned the spring of next year, the sooner that is discussed and those are decided, the better. Because as we start moving toward January, and even as soon as the events are done, vendors want to know, will this event be held next year? Fireworks have lead time, I mean, there's a lot of things that you don't just decide to do or not do on a short-term basis. So my recommendation is that if the board really wants to have some discussions about options to either, and, and I think what I would say, the context that I would recommend is that you first establish what is the goal, and then work back from the goal to secondarily say, how much does the goal cost? And so if the, the goals remain that we want people to come downtown and to have interactions there, then what's the dollar amount that you want to allocate to that? So work from that framework of goal, cost, and then we can come back with the operational component of how to deliver those, and, and also make some recommendations as to what fits in, what might eventually be scaled back. I would point out, and I think most, all, everyone's aware, that there were two things scaled back this year, one being the 4th of July day-long celebration. What was done in past years, and I don't know how many years, but I know last year, the beach party event was removed, and it's not happening this year. It's, it's an opportunity to really do a couple of things. One, save money, but then also acknowledge that our staff cannot work from 7:00 in the morning to past midnight, year after year after year. So it, it, it has a toll on the staff, it has a toll on public services, and it has a dollar cost. So that component went away this year. In the Friday concert series, we went from 12 events down to four events on the first Friday of each month, so there's some cost savings there, but it's an acknowledgement that there does need to be, and there was a, a review this year, you know, it's kind of a quicker review of what some interim steps can be, but my recommendation for the board is use the time period after the budget is adopted, whatever the budget form this year is, to reexamine where you want to be long-term with special events.
So with that, that was a definite concern of mine, as, as well as the $198,000 cost for the amount of events and services that were going on that we did discuss. Another thing that was a concern of mine was the communication. With social media being what it is, and communication that was out there this past week, and even going forward in, in the past, there seems to be some communication issues from the town with what we are doing or what we are trying to do as a town, and people are running with a lot of things that may or may not be true. And I asked of you, you know, how better could we, as a board, or how better could you and your staff communicate better with the town and the citizens to let them know exactly what was going on, to hopefully alleviate some of the miscommunication that is out there with allegations regarding the budget or mismanagement or anything else that's going on here? So that was a concern as well. We did go line by line, I won't go through the whole thing, with the budget to clarify a number of questions and how things were being done, including some training and subscription services, all of that. But as some of the commissioners have already said, there are things that we can address and move forward with as far as cutting and scaling back and allocating a number of funds that can be put back into the town's funds and budgets for the things that we do need here in the town, and also letting the town see exactly what it is that we are doing with their monies. Another question that I did have for you had to do with the sanitation fee that was coming up and the $80. And to clarify, the $80 fee versus a tax, and in understanding that that fee was in our budget before, that it was taken out, my understanding with the possibility of there being a tax implemented, for you to clarify that versus the tax, what the need was, what if we took the money out of the CIP, we would be losing with that $440,000 or approximately that we would lose without getting this fee in there, and how we should actually move forward with that. So if you could go into more detail with that, I'd appreciate that, too.
And you may need to, to go back through those because I think there was more than one question here, and I don't want-
There was a number of them.
Don't want to miss one. The solid waste fee had been implemented here some number of years ago. Initially, it was set at $40 per house, per year. That was increased at a point to $80 per household, single-family household, per year. It was discontinued during a reevaluation, revow year, where property values are adjusted. As I understand it, and I'm not purporting to know every thought process here, but one of the considerations was that there was a revow, revow taking place. of the considerations was that there was a revow taking place and that there might be a better strategy to set some amount of that into the tax rate. Whether it was a declared goal to try to shift the entire amount or what amount or percentage into it, I'm not sure. Full discussion on that or what the intents were. I think what we have looked at in reviewing it is that revaluation did not produce enough to offset the cost that was lost with the reduction in the fee. The second part of that equation is that the service level today is a higher service level than the service level that was in existence at that time. Primary relates to the way recycling is delivered today, which is the bigger container, larger capacity, and not the smaller 18-gallon capacity container. The third component of that certainly is the number of houses that have continued to increase and it varies, but if you look at 20, 25-plus per month, then there's an increased cost if you're not recouping some of that or all of that in a fee model. The board could certainly look at any number of ways to address that situation. The one that we recommended in the budget was to reinstate the fee as it's been charged in the past at $80 per annual cost per household, single-family household. The other option is that you could try to generate a dollar figure based on a tax rate equivalent. So a penny equals about $186,000. So if you turn that dollar amount into how many pennies, roughly two and a half cents would be a tax rate equivalent. There's not a magic answer to addressing that particular part of it. So different communities have addressed it different ways. On the flip side, I think this is maybe the second or third part of the question, was what's the alternative? I think one thing that we mentioned and recognized at the last meeting is that if there is a gap and it's over $400,000, there's only one area that's large enough to be a suitable target and that's really the CIP contribution. There's a contribution of $650,000 contemplated in the proposed budget. That's probably the location that that $400,000-plus delta would hit. So while we have talked about two projects in the coming year, one thing I wanted to go back to, and there's a slide that really kind of addressed it, but the budget this year doesn't have debt service, nor does it have a capital project funded. And the key to that is that there are two that are on the short-term, 12-month window and those are the fields on Kensington or the Y, soccer fields, been called various things, and then a public services land and facility location. So those are two that we have discussed in the past as being prime for a short-term, not short-term, but for a loan from a bank. They're smaller in total dollar amount, so while they could be included into a general obligation bond and be lumped into a larger number, the timing and then the type of facility that we're contemplating, contemplating in the dollar amounts lend themselves more to a bank loan, installment purchase contract is the formal name of it. The issuance costs would be lower in that particular scenario. The interest rates might be slightly higher than a GO bond, but still competitive. So that's the tool that we looked at as being a way to address shorter-term or quicker projects that are lower cost than some of the bigger projects that are perhaps readily addressed by GO referendum. If there's another question, I'll try to address it.
And without this fee, I think the next part of my question was, the money then would come out of the CIP to cover the shortfall and we then would not be able to address some of the projects that you had or wanted to address with that $650,000 that we would be getting? I'm just trying to fully make sure that I'm asking it the right way.
What's the effect?
Right.
Let me go back to kind of the CIP model and document that was talked about in the August timeframe. But then again, really in January at the retreat and in February with Davenport and Company who came in and talked about some of the projects. Pages 32's got a chart, and there's a lot of charts in the book, but there's a chart there that shows the contribution of $650,000 gets, I'm going to say baked into the basic funding model. And so the premise of that to go back is that we're currently funding $350,000 for one capital project and $300,000 for another capital project. And the assumption was you could take that funding stream that's currently in place, one of which is 350 plus 350 plus 350 that went into the Y capital project, the other is 300,000 for a park project. You could take those two pieces together and continue to do that. So that was the premise of the CIP model was your previous practice has been pay-as-you-go and so we're going to assume and believe that you can continue to put some of those same dollars or all those same dollars for up to 650 into the model. So what the model basically showed was if you continue to do that, you build up a borrowing capacity and depending on what year you actually borrow a larger amount of money, that 650 provides your basic debt service for a larger, a number of larger projects. The question then becomes a couple, but in what year do you issue the debt? And the longer you push the debt out before it's issued, the more capacity you actually gain. So you're adding to your reserve for being able to pay it, but you're also adding to the total amount that you could address. And so that model showed two or three different scenarios there, one of which was if you don't do tax increases, what's your capacity just putting the 650 into a plan over time? Another model showed if you put the 650 and then you anticipate some tax increase over time. And so all those various scenarios showed different levels of investment over years two, three, or four. And so long way of saying, the 650 underpins any of those models moving forward. Can it be restored? Could you have a year where you didn't fund it? Absolutely, but there would have to be some sort of plan for year number two to come back to address it.
Year number two could be cutting back, scaling back on our expenditures and the things that we've talked about today to replace funds, correct? That we're not spending.
Yeah, I just don't believe that there's 400 and something thousand that's readily identifiable without service cuts and without impacting the service delivery that we're currently doing.
Now, if we were, well, because I think the majority of us are in agreement with cutting back on a number of things that are in the budget, but going long-term, would the cutting back be able to cover adequately the need moving forward? So even if we were to cut back, would that be enough to address the need that we have moving forward long-term?
No. I think your question gets to the heart of any facility that's built or anything that's added as part of CIP has another line that we're not really talking about and that's operating cost.
Yep.
And so while it's theoretically possible to single out one capital project and say, we're going to figure out how to do this one or that one, everything has some sort of operating costs, including signals, which are the lowest, one of the lowest ones there, but you've got to restripe it. Somebody's got to maintain it and it hopefully would be DOT, but there's maintenance on everything. Buildings and parks and facilities are going to be on the higher end. Horizontal stuff might be on the lower end.
Steve, five or six months ago, I had the opportunity to spend a day in Pittsboro at a budgeting workshop. And Chatham County had been extremely successful in implementing over a number of years budget disciplines, and that was their operating costs, their improvements, everything that they did, they did looking forward. They weren't focused on cutting this or cutting that. They were focused on improving things and they looked at their own, their overall financial position, which was, you know, it's the budget, but it was also how much money are we putting away? What are we doing with our fund balance? Things that we've started to implement here and they're probably a couple of years ahead of us, but because of that discipline and because of that preparation and because of saving money at times when there were, when they could, they were able to go to the bond markets, go to Standard and Poor's, go to Moody's, go to Fitch, come away with half a point to a full point advantage on bond issues and so forth. And they were able to, you know, they're a county now, not us, but they were able to fund $300 million plus in county projects. Again, they were not focused on little details. They were focused on improving, improving, improving. And I don't like the term cutting. I think what I understand you're saying about events, we could improve our performance on events. We could attract partners. We could attract sponsors. We could, as I said before, if we look at things from a cost-benefit perspective, how do we get more bang for our buck? And there are a lot of positive ways that we can do that. One of the comments earlier about perhaps not spending $25,000 on Urban Land Institute, I respectfully don't agree with that because I think that's a cost preparing ourselves to get a better look at the properties we own. And this is something we've been talking about for well over a year before you got here. We wanted to have an analysis of what our town-owned properties are and what the disposition of them should be. And I will agree with everybody here at the table. I think that the corner lot is probably the most valuable piece of property in the town of Waxaw and it's underutilized. Can it be sold? Sure. How do you go about it? And when you introduced the idea of bringing on the Urban Land Institute, which is a national and actually internationally respected group to come up with the highest, to help us come up with the highest invest use for that, I thought, great, we're moving, we're moving forward. We're moving in a good direction. Sometimes you have to invest a little money to make a little money. So that's where I'd like to go. I'd like to keep moving forward. I'd like to remain positive. I'd like us to improve, 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 not cut, cut, cut.
To get back into the details and the weeds here out of the philosophical, which is, I'm sure has value, but the cuts that I suggested, if you include cutting the facade grant, which we've also debated, do we spend it on the NIVN price? That's fine. But if you include that, that's over $100,000 in cuts. That's not touching the events. What I hear you say about events is it might be, the best course of action might be, and please correct me if I'm misunderstanding you, for us to agree on a value number that we think is a good budget and then give that to the staff and have them come back with how they would allocate that across events, less events, more events, here, there, cut that, scale that. I'm happy to do that tonight. I would like to see that number come down. I think that's a valuable discussion for us to have if we can agree on what we consider a reasonable budget and then leave it to the staff to, who are the experts, to best know how to divide that pie. You know, I've been accused before of splitting hairs over a few hundred thousand dollars and I'm kind of wearing that as a badge of honor. I think we need to. This isn't my budget. It's not your budget. It's not Lisa's budget. It's the people's budget and it's the people's money that's going to pay for it. So we are entrusted as stewards of the people's money and we have to account for every penny. I feel, I don't have a problem with the Urban Land Institute. I just suggested that we might want to have a conversation first. Do we all feel that certain properties should be sold? If we all agree on a starting point, perhaps that service contract with that consultant can be whittled down and made more affordable because we won't be asking as many questions. Maybe we all, if we're all going into it from, we feel there's property that should be, it might be able to be scaled. Just a recommendation. I'm glad to hear Commissioner McMillan say she would like to see cuts, she would like to see tightening of the belt. I hope I'm not misrepresenting you. I was hoping to hear more of where from people other than just me. I'm interested to hear what other people recommend. This is my first time going through the budget, so I am learning this. I've done department budgets before, but nothing anywhere near this large. I want to see where we can economize. I feel that we need to do that. That is our job. And if we have, as we have heard many times, a culture of ask for the moon and then we'll whittle it down, then what you get is a large budget and what is then asked of us is whittle it down. If we can give better guidance in the future to perhaps try to switch that culture to one of, tell me what you bare bones have to have and then show me your scalable options, then you're in a position where you get to say, what can we add? What better can we do? What more can we provide? As opposed to what can we eliminate? What can we eliminate? What can we eliminate? I wanted to see those scalability options with this budget instead of just a presented, done deal here. I wanted to see, and maybe we have to be involved earlier in the process, but I wanted to see from departments, well, this is what we've got to have. It can't function without this. If we had more, we could add this. If we had more, we could do that more. I need that information. Otherwise, I am just going to be coming at this from the end of, the bottom line is too big. We've got to cut it back. So if anybody else has suggestions or if we can have a discussion on events budget, I think that would be valuable.
Again, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think it's our job to tell the staff what the budget is. I think it's vice versa. I think it's our job to tell you something to the effect that we'd like to look at these different parts of the budget and have you come back to us with your suggestions. If we find ourselves getting into your work all the time, then we are doing your job. We're interfering with it. And what you're saying, I agree with. We want to improve. We want to have good use of taxpayers' money, but we want it to come, I want it to come from you, not from me to you.
I have a comment on that as well, and I think that's, I can go back to what I said earlier. I would have liked to have seen what we discussed at the end here before two weeks we have to vote on this, two months ago, the conversation between, the individual conversations between us. Not criticizing, I'm just, improving the next year and even summit with this year is how we go about looking at all of this and making decisions before we get to the end and we have to have a balanced budget voted on. So that's what I'm asking for is more input back from you earlier.
I did want to get some clarification on something. I've seen recently three job postings on the town Facebook page. Were those included already in this budget? Have they, so they've already been allocated, those salaries and...
No job has been posted that has not been approved. So if you saw a job where there's town attorney or whatever, that's already been approved.
It was like assistant finance director, engineer, okay.
Existing position.
Right. Those are already in this year's budget. There already is an assistant finance director and she's transferring to another department. So it leaves an opening that we have to replace. It's not a new position.
Okay.
I want to take a moment to agree with... I want to take a moment to agree with Commissioner Byrne. I think that we would, we will be better served next year to know more about this earlier. I think that as we, one of the things we have improved somewhat over the years, uh, and we're not completed there yet, is communication. And I would like to see us have a little more understanding, and maybe it's we get back to informational meetings so we can know what's going on a little bit ahead of time, and understand what, what, you know, what you need so we can support it. I don't want to, you know, I don't want to do anything negative or cut or do this. I want to improve. And I think it would help us all if we start earlier strategizing amongst ourselves how we approach this. I think we would all be more comfortable. I think, you know, again, we're learning things, all of us, we, at the table and the staff and everything else. If we can get a better handle on what the next year is going to be, and what we need, and what's happening, and are able to get that out there, as Commissioner McMillan said, to the public in a better way, we'll all be a lot, you know, happier, less stressed, uh, having, you know, we'll be able to discuss it intelligently with our friends and neighbors and, and so forth here in Waxahachie.
So I'm just going to make a couple of, of comments and tie, try to tie it back to, uh, some of the things that everybody has said. So it sounds like we're all in agreement that a good use of the facade grant would be for our own property. So we have some agreement there. While it's in the budget, it would be probably behoove you to come back and, and share with us, what can the ULI do for us? Does it help us with the covenants to protect the NIVN price building? Does it help us get more value out of the, um, out of the, the property with certain designs or, or, or whatever? And while it may be in the budget before we spend it, we have a good understanding that we're making a good, good investment. Maybe, maybe that will help educate us, the difference between the budget and do we actually spend it? If not, can we use it? Can we use it elsewhere at that point in time? And Lisa loves to make budget amendments to move things around, I know, I know. And, but maybe that's a way to, to help us with our whole learning, learning process. The comments about events and parks, I think this is part of a overall bigger thing that we have to get our arms around, and that's community development. We're all talking about it. We're all upset about it. As recently as this weekend, somebody asked me if we have a porta potty strategy for parks, because all they see is porta potties around. And, and that's embarrassing, especially when you get asked at a region-wide meeting in public. I, I mean, that's, that's embarrassing, but that's on us. We've got to figure out a way to, to bring events and parks together to figure out what's best for the community. I don't know the answer to that. I think what you're talking about here in terms of, of, of actually stepping back and actually saying, to your point, what's the, what do we want to accomplish? Do we even need to accomplish it all downtown? I mean, we, we push a lot down there, but is that where we want to put our focus? In many ways, we just said with the decision on the museum, we don't have the event structure or the, or the program structure yet, so let's go define that. And, and it isn't, uh, I think it was Commissioner Byrne said, we're not cutting, but it's a repurposing based upon what's our community development strategy. I think, I think that would be very, a very good exercise, maybe in a retreat format where we're all talking about that, um, versus trying to, trying to, uh, solve it and then see what all of our friends and acquaintances on social media think of, of what we have to say about it. Um, I'm worried about our, um, facilities. We've talked about public works. Right around the corner, our town hall lease is up in two years. And you're, we're out of, out of space. So what do, what do we do? I think we have a two-year...
November 2019.
Don't we have an extension, or have we already invoked that?
We have requested it, but we don't have it in place.
So, okay.
We have November or so in 2019.
Okay. So, I mean, we went through this four years ago where, uh, we implemented squatter rights. And the person that drew the short straw sat outside Bobby's office, but, uh, I, I mean, it was not a pleasant experience, especially when they're trying to do their job, very serious job. And, uh, so we have those issues on us. Let's go right through it. Do we want to continue to do statements for the boards?
Having been on the planning board and the historic preservation, um, I think it, I think it's a way of saying thank you that's meaningful, and I would like to continue it. It's...
Got it.
Got it.
Got it. Commissioner Westling?
Yes, serving on the board, putting in a couple hours a month. I think that's, it's not a lot that we're giving.
Commissioner Lee?
It all adds up to a lot, though, so no, I think we don't pay volunteers.
Commissioner Burns?
I have a different reasoning, and it comes from some of the board members that in the past and current board members have said they feel bad taking the $25. So, not everyone, but, but some do say, I don't really want it, and I, then you don't have to take it. So, um, I'm okay with the, with the, um, I'm okay with the fee that we give them, but I think we need to look at it in a different way, maybe next year. What are we really doing? We can show our appreciation in other ways. Then a $25 check is particularly, like I said, with people that say, I really don't need it. That's not why I'm doing it, and I feel bad taking it.
One of the things that we do on, one of the boards I'm on up, up in Raleigh is, here's your stipend, but you're more than, uh, it's okay to turn it back in and, and donate it back to, to the not-for-profit that you're on. And, you know, maybe that's a way to kind of balance this and encourage, and not pull the check back, but encourage them to do so. Commissioner McMillan?
That was going to be my statement, to give them that option to be able to do that if they did not want to accept it. It's either donate it back, not take it, you know, give it back to the town, um, you know. But, uh, I think that we need to, as Commissioner Byrne said, um, address this maybe next year and moving forward, how best to handle it. Um, so right now, I'm okay with it, but give people the option of not taking it would be fine, too, and look at it totally next year.
All right. Um, Commissioner Lee, you said business, I wrote down business statements, but it was the 3,100.
The 3,100.
And that was, again, refresh my...
It goes towards, um, training and advertising your business. It goes to sponsoring luncheon, uh, tickets to go to Chamber of Commerce events for the businesses on Main Street. No, it's, um, find the number, just a second. It's under the Main Street Division.
Is, Greg, is that for all businesses or, or just certain businesses?
Well, let me clarify that, because we did email that out, and I think it might be good just to read it.
Yeah, I have some questions on downtown.
It's under, it's under the downtown division at the very bottom of the page, just above public parking lease. It's listed as advisory board, but that was...
What page number are you on?
Uh, 24 of 60.
You sent out a response. Do you have it? Are you looking for it?
I have it right here. I'm going to read from here.
Sure. So, Main Street Advisory Board has had these items in their budget for the past two years, 16 and 17, because they're consistent with its charge as described in the Main Street Advisory Board Rules of Procedure, and this is called out, just printed below. Promoting Market Downtown as a location for existing and new businesses and aim to achieve full use, infill, and occupancy of the downtown district. The luncheon sponsorship and presentation materials have been beneficial in achieving the board's stated purpose of promoting and marketing downtown. This kind of outreach is essential to build awareness and achieve that goal. For example, we sponsored the Union County Chamber of Commerce Young Professionals Luncheon. This gave the downtown development manager the chance to speak to the chamber members and promote downtown as the place to locate a business. The second italic, um, statement there is foster positive outlook in spirit of cooperation among the various interest groups involved in the remonstrance of downtown Waxahachie. And kind of an explanation says the social media and marketing training has been well received by the businesses and helps them achieve the stated purpose above through collecting, collective marketing efforts and building cooperation. We've done this once a year, and the classes have directly benefited 27 downtown businesses and/or their representatives. The budget item may be better described or labeled as downtown promotion initiatives. It, it could be managed by staff, not the MSAB, and that would be our recommendation is really, it's not MSAB-driven, it should be more staff-driven.
My issue with it isn't who's driving it, it's just that, and it sounds like a wonderful program, but we're raising fees on people. We have to, we need to show them that we're going to tighten our belts. And if it's educational and to help with networking and to help with sponsorships for the Chamber of Commerce, again, wonderful. Is it necessary? I don't think so.
Even under our events, um, our events and promotions division, don't they do advertising and promotions that can be combined along with the downtown or something, or include that in with their expense account as opposed to giving, um, the downtown the 31, or the Main Street Advisory Board that 3,100? Is there some way to do that?
So...
Like a more efficient combine them or something?
Because you have events, and if they're doing events or if they're doing promotions, if you have a budget with your staff that's already doing that, and you have a staff to do it...
Would that reduce the cost?
So I think the purpose of two line items is to get to something that we didn't have as recently as two years ago, understanding where the money's going. And I think by parsing it out, we have a better understanding. You're asking an execution question, and, and maybe you can answer the execution question.
The stated goals are really different. So the event, marketing, and programming costs are going to be for those type special events and not be focused on the business portion of it. Uh, the downtown budget's going to be focused specifically on the businesses that are located there. Could there be overlap? Absolutely. Has there been in the past? Yes. Um, I guess as the mayor pointed out, there is more of a division of where the costs are allocated now for clarity and for transparency, and could they be reduced? That's the board's call on that, but they're really broken out for clarity.
You want to do it, Commissioner?
Basically, I agree with it, but I'll ask you the question this way. Do you think it's produced good results?
Yeah, I don't think I have a, enough time here to really say that. I think Kirk could probably speak to that better than I can, but I think that there's a, a place and a time for a dollar amount to help do certain things in the downtown, but that, um, it's probably a better answer by other people, but in downtowns, this is not unique. This is pretty typical that there's a budget for certain things. Um, one thing that we don't really have that is called out in a couple of our plans is there's not an active retail merchants association that's just focused on downtown. We've got the WBA.
Right.
We've got members of WBA that are not even located in Waxahachie. So a retail merchant association, there's certain things that communities do to strengthen those ties. It's, again, a local preference, and you get to decide how you want to allocate those dollars and whether the goals and objectives, objectives are achieved.
Some, I agree with it. I don't want to take out that little bit of money that does that kind of good. Uh, I have asked a couple of times over the last few years, some other towns around here have special tax districts where it's only the downtown, and they match dollar for dollar and use that money strictly for downtown. I think it all gets back to what do we want to do with our downtown? And we have planned for it as long as eight or nine years ago and done nothing really about those plans to execute them. So the 3,700 is a drop in the bucket compared to what we should be doing with downtown. Again, do we get our best value for those dollars spent? That's the test I would like to see us using continuously. Do we get a good return for our investments?
Just a, a point of clarity, while we have had downtown plans, they were used quite successfully to, for the, uh, walkability grant that we got. And the other thing is what we've all been talking about, one of the things it led to was the purchase of property that we're now trying to dispose of because it got too expensive to, for us to do anything with it. And so, you know, that's something we're trying to resolve, so, um...
Greg, on, on this same page, um, I had a question mark here, and I think I missed that when we were talking Friday. On, um, downtown projects, that's 11,500, what, what is that?
Which, which page are you referring to?
24.
Which document?
24 of 60.
Page 16. 24 of 60, downtown division.
While we're at it, yes or no to the 3,100?
That's what it is.
I don't know how else to do it other than to work our way through it. You got your mouth full, so we'll go this way.
Can we reduce, would, would, can we reduce that amount?
Do anything we want.
Would you be willing to reduce the amount?
I'm for savings anywhere we can get them. If you're having a smaller number, I'll take smaller...
For a 3,100?
It's 3,100 right now.
Even if we cut it in half?
I, hey, I'll take a reduction anywhere I can get it.
That's...
I'm for cutting it in half.
Half's good. I'll be good with that.
There's consensus...
Again, I, I'm going to disagree with the whole concept. I don't think it's our job to sit here and go line by line and cut this or cut that. That's your job. Our job is to give you the goals, not to cut individual line items. I think we're abdicating our responsibility if we want to take up yours. So I would leave it alone. I have to respect your decisions and move forward.
Can I?
And if you need information from us on what those goals should be, that's appropriate. And if we don't provide you the goals, shame on us.
So there is a, there is a push to clarify what value we're getting out of that. And, and that's part of this overall, how do we do a better job of communicating, both listening and, and speaking in terms of how are we using these dollars as we move from budget to expense? What are we, what are we getting from this? You mentioned something interesting, and I know the Main Street Board's working on a local downtown merchants association. I don't know where they are. We'll get an update in June when they present their work plan, I hope. But these are, these are things that we're going to have to talk through as we go forward.
Just so that I understand your point of view better. We are given a proposal. Is it your belief that we should look at that and say something like, you know, I think that number needs to come down 10% over the total? Or is it your, um, do you think we should just approve what we're given and trust that it's as efficient as it could be? Or how, how, what's your, do you understand what I'm trying to ask?
I think there's a yin and a yang, okay? And I think we're getting at the meat of it all, okay? Because we're actually communicating, and that's something that needs to improve. And I think that, um, the way I see it and the different classes that I've taken, our job is to be at 36,000 feet, giving policies and procedures, not going line by line. Now, as an exercise this time, I'm not that upset by the fact that you've actually taken the time to look at this and do this because you're familiarizing yourself with this process. And I think what's coming of it, coming out of this, is that there's going to be better communication earlier on, and we'll all be ready, much more comfortable the next time we have a budget cycle, to know that what is in that budget is something that we all pretty much in agreement with, and we've given direction over the course of the, between now and January of 2019 on what we expect to be in that budget.
What do you mean by a goal? When you say we should give them a goal? What are you asking for?
Something as simple as, are we getting a good return on every investment we make?
Okay. My, first, I'm glad you're not upset that I go through things line by line, because I'm going to be doing that for four years. Our goal then is, in my statement, we're raising fees, so we're spending more than we are taking in. Now we have to take in more money. So my goal then is reduce what we are spending. If it's better to say a number, let's cut that by 10%.
But I think you're missing another goal.
we are taking in, now we have to take in more money. So, my goal then is reduce what we are spending. If it's better to say a number, let's cut that by ten percent.
But I think you're missing another goal.
Hang on, so by statute and by charter, we're council manager form of government, we're supposed to rely on Greg and the staff. I think what we're struggling with is we had a lot of ying but no yang from the beginning of the year. And while you did start us at the retreat, we haven't had this kind of dialogue about how our departments work. This is atypical in this form of government where we get to the line item level. It is very typical though, and you saw it in Charlotte, you see it, um, I was watching Davidson, hey, we wanna do this, we wanna increase that, wait a minute. I don't have the stomach to, to increase the fee. No, but that discussion happens before the proposed budget. That, that's where...
I would've appreciated that.
That, that's where that tends to come out. I think in defense of Greg, I think he thinks he was having that. We've been having a lot of other challenges with the communication and hopefully this is the start of, of moving it in the right direction. But, per our charter, per our form of government, we should be at the, the man, the policy level and really going through, pick on, pick on parks, pick on events. What do we want for community development? This is what we want to strive for. We want more programming. We want, we want this kind of thing happening in our parks. How do we make that happen and let the experts tell us how to do it? That's where we should be and that's where we gotta get there.
I just wanted to say with three of us being on the board now as new members and not going through, um, a budget process like this before, um, to us, you know, because I did go through this too, um, with lines and questions and things, not understanding. So, this is what we did to try and familiarize ourselves because we did not have a basis or anything else to fall back on. But if moving forward, if we can, if it's even at the retreat, to start then with this type of information or this type of discussion or communication so that we can plan and say, hey, we would like to see this in the budget, or we wouldn't like to see this in the budget. We didn't have that option, not to pick on Greg or the staff because I think they've done a very good job. But, just being new to the process itself did not, we did not have that availability to do that, which is I think why we are at this stage that we are at now with the questions that we do have with some of the things that have come up. But moving forward, that would be a better option, you know, all around, and that would get us back to the manager council form with dealing with policy and addressing those issues that you, as you stated.
There's nothing wrong with all the questions that are coming up because of where we are. I will, I will go back to when I first got on the board. We had, we had a retreat, I think it was August, right after we approved the budget because we were new enough, I didn't have a clue as to what all these things were 'cause there's so many different little morsels of information and, and we, we also did things differently. We, um, and what we budgeted and what we spent were two different things because we were able, as we had a retreat, to better understand what was going on and then begin to say, hey, wait a minute. Why do we, can we do that better? Can we do it more efficiently? Could we, could we cut this out because we're not, we don't see the value as we're in the middle of executing? And at that point in time, first it was Greg Mahar and then, then Warren Wood. Okay, yeah, you're right, we're not getting that value. Here's a, here's a good example. You brought up communication. We had the work plan presented in, in January. I'm not sure we all, what we all thought of it, we haven't had a lot of discussion on it. I struggled coming out of the, the budget meeting 'cause every one of you were attacked individually. But that's not the town's responsibility to go to defend you individually. Greg, Lisa, uh, communications people have to defend the town and that was, that was very, very awkward. We gotta get in a room, we can't overreact, but we have to get in a room and talk about, how do we do a better job of making sure the town's position? And if you guys wanna go off and argue individually, that's, that, that's fine, there's, you know, that's, that's on you. But the town is, he can't defend, if he defends one of you without defending the other four or five, he can't do that. That's, so, that, those situations that we've gotten ourselves into, um, you know, that's what we have to work on. That's what we gotta get in the room and figure out, how are we going to attack communication? Maybe we need to spend more money, I don't know. Maybe, maybe we need to go attack, I know, but, you know, I don't, I don't know what the answer is, but see there, I have, I have a problem with that. Before we even know what, what the problem is, we're saying we can't spend more money. I don't know. Maybe we need to spend less, maybe we need to spend more. But we gotta define the problem, respond to the work plan and actually give clear direction.
Well, and that's, that's what I've, you know, when Greg and I talked Friday, that's some of the things we talked about is, is the process of getting this information to, to us now.
Yep.
And I would request now, um, for next year's budget, I would like a line item and including that line item comparison this year to what the proposed budget is for next year. When we get all of this other information, I would like this document. Because I'm going to go, I've always have, and I'm going to go through the line item because I think it's important to see how tax dollars are spent, whether it's large or small. Now, back to the eleven thousand five hundred, can you tell me what, that way that is?
Sure. That's for, um, what it's, it says for projects downtown like sewer grates, no parking signs, railings, um, benches, uh, new historic brochure kiosks.
Okay.
It's just several...
That's fine, I wasn't sure, thank you.
And I'm, not typically, yeah, we can, no, jumping around. Um, I'm gonna want a line item too. And some of this, yes, is that I am new to this and so I've asked Greg, Greg knows, you know, he said we got, we compiled fifty-two pages of comments from us that were from everyone who provided comments saying, what does this mean? What does this code mean? What does that go to? So that we can understand it better. The other half of that is, I get this and it says, you know, here's the department total, and I don't know where that's going for. I have no way of knowing if that's the most efficient way to fund that department. But, in the front of this, first page, is a picture, a name for all of us. My name will go on the final budget whether I voted for it or not. You know, to quote the great, a great playwright, it's my name and I'll never have another one. So, before I willingly put it on something, I'm gonna wanna understand it down into the weeds and down to the crumbs. So, I'm sorry if that is uncomfortable for anyone, if that offends staff, I don't mean it to be offensive. It, it's my name and I need to understand what it's being attached to. That's all it is for me. I have to understand. Go ahead. People going down the list.
Oh.
We're not gonna talk about events budget.
I mean...
Or are we gonna get more feedback from the staff?
On?
On any ways that we could scale or reduce that number?
Um, so, what, what you're hearing from us, Greg, is, or, there's some consensus of, um, struggling with the fee structure, struggling with increasing. So, um, I think there's, there's an ask by at least three commissioners to say, is, is this as lean as it gets? And come back and ask and answer that question. Rather than go through line item by line item, 'cause I think you've done that individually. Is this as lean? You've knocked out three percent, is there more to knock? And if the board decides that they don't wanna do the fee, um, you're gonna have to knock. But, that's, that's what I hear coming back.
There's another point I'd like to make. And, um, one of the things that, as we try to stay at a policy level, uh, I, I think it should be one of our policies, one of our goals, to present ourselves as financially responsible as possible. Having had the benefit of that day in Pittsboro, the things that had been done there and in some of their towns in Chatham County, um, was to make sure that the fund balance was under control, ours is. That you were putting aside money for your CIP on a regular basis, that you weren't skipping years, and you were funding it always and you were spending it as you proposed. In other words, you were planning ahead and you were executing your plans. That's what the bonding agencies were looking for, fiscally responsible town or county management. And if you come back and say, what you had proposed, either as a fee or a tax increase, and I've said before, I don't care which it is, I feel that funding the CIP is a responsible thing to do because it's going to have a long-term, very beneficial effect on when we decide to go to a bank to borrow money. You may get it all back in a quarter point or a half a point interest rate over the life. And I think the quote from our, from Davenport was, we've got a twelve million dollar borrowing capacity. Figure that out, what's a half a point over ten, fifteen, twenty years? It's probably what you're putting, what you might be cutting out. So, my, my ask is be fiscally responsible and look to the future and look to how we improve our financial position with other towns, other communities and lending institution and rating institutions.
So, what I've heard is, and I go back to the citizen survey and the satisfaction with the services, et cetera. And so, what I've, what I've heard, the board expressed a desire on is to have a robust discussion of what is community development vis-à-vis parks and, uh, events and what do we want it to be in the future? What's our goal? And then, how do we allocate against that as we proceed next year? Understand, we can't get there before June, July, August, but have that discussion about what is our goal and, and how to, how to, let the subject matter experts come back and say, hey, given that goal, here's what, here's, here's what you're going to have to do. We'll have the park and rec master plan as part of that, here's what, how that fits in. And so, we'll have, we'll have a chance to take one that quite honestly was not at the high part of the satisfaction level. I think that, I think the community was telling us, go take a look at it, so let's go take a look at it. Maybe we should've done it earlier this year, I mean, but we're, we are where we are. That's one. We have, I'm just gonna reconfirm because that impacts what Greg and Lisa have to do. We're, we've confirmed the vehicle fee for rec, and we've confirmed, we do not want the sanitation fee.
Now, with the sanitation, that was part of my question and sit down with you to understand exactly what went on with that sanitation fee and how it was implemented before versus a tax versus a fee and how that would affect our CIP. So, with that information and my conversation with you, I mean, you shared some of it now through your discussion, you know, I would be in favor of the fee even, and I am still in favor of, I know you don't like the word cuts to the budget, but I am in favor of improving the budget and trying to streamline that down with costs, um, moving forward. Does that answer your question?
So, now we're having this all right.
So, you want to reopen the fee discussion and just, and put it on the table? Okay.
I'm against the garbage fee and the vehicle fee.
As am I.
And, and the reasoning is, when I go through this budget and we've sat here and we've talked from, it's two hours about, well, we don't want to say cut, we don't want to offend anybody, we don't want to, um, have people out there saying things that they shouldn't on Facebook and all the trolls doing their thing. The bottom line is, there's no way to get to where we need to get to, in my mind, without cutting the budget. And, there's no way to stop the increase of these fees each year without cutting the budget. Because there's nothing that we can do next year, we'll all five be sitting here doing this budget, and if the money is needed, then there could be a recommendation, let's go up to fifty dollars on this vehicle fee. Or let's change the garbage, um, fee to a hundred and fifty dollars. That's not that much, that's ten dollars a month for everybody. Let's face it, most people in Waxahau probably can pay that without a problem, but there are a lot of people that can't. There's nothing to stop this from growing every year. That's my concern because I've seen it happen in other towns. We need the money, let's go up on this one. And once you institute and put that in place, there you go. So, I'm not for, I'm still not for this increase on the taxpayers. Not when we have a hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars spent on events and a lot of other, as I go through this line item, a lot of other places that I see that could be scaled back. Before we, before we do those fees, I think it's a responsible action to go here first.
I wouldn't be in favor of either of those fees either. As I said last time, these are flat fees, which means they hit the most vulnerable members of our community the hardest. Maybe a lot of people can afford to. I know Christopher Burl said he'd be happy to pay two hundred and something dollars for a stretch. Some people, that's half the medication, half of one of their medications they might need. It's money towards, you know, things their children need for school. There are people all over, all sides of this town who are gonna be hurt hard by this. Maybe it's not you, maybe it's not me, maybe it is. We, you know, to lead, to use a, a sort of a layman's example, we, we're having nineteen parties a year and we're going to our boss and saying, dude, I need more money, I can't afford my gas. And the boss is gonna say, then have fewer parties. You know, don't have nineteen parties a year and then you'll be able to afford your gas. We, we can't just say, I'm in favor of reducing the budget. We have to show where. We have to do it, not just say we're in favor of it. Before we tell the people, we're taking more money out of your wallet. So, no, I'm not in favor of either of these.
Do I want to charge fees? No. Do I like it? No. But I know that, I believe funding the CIP is very important for us moving forward for our future. We can sit here and look at where we can cut, but we have to come up with four hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars to make up for that. And, and three thousand dollars here and there is, is not gonna do it. Do I believe that we could readjust our events, um, funding? Yes, I do. I think a hundred and ninety-eight thousand is too much. I'd like to see us go back and relook at that, see what, what events we really are getting our bang for a buck. I think downtown division, we could look at some things there, yes. We don't have the time for that right now, I'm hoping moving forward we do, but right now, we have to find this four hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. And I am not for taking out these projects in our CIP, I'm just, I'm not for that. And I just don't think, if we could come up with four hundred and twenty-nine thousand and cut somewhere, that would be great. I just don't see where we can come up with that.
I think I've already stated my case. I, I would be in favor of the fees or a tax, you know, increase. I'm not, to me, it's immaterial which it comes from. I am in favor of making sure that the CIP moves forward, that we don't inflict a four hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollar hole in this budget, that we look as good as we can for the future and continue that way. So, if it's fees, it's fees. Thank you.
Just to, um, clarify something else with the change in what I'm stating. That change came because, yes, there is a four hundred plus thousand dollar deficit with the budget if we don't do the fees, but also through conversation that moving forward, even if we do, um, make adjustments within our budgets, they will not be sufficient enough to cover the cost even moving forward. And even with that, we still have to cover things that are in our CIP. And then we're stating that we want to open our parks and we want to have recreation, we want other things for our citizens to enjoy. Yes, we do, but we're not gonna have the money moving forward if we don't do this. And then even addressing some of the cuts, well, I have to say cuts 'cause that's what they are. some of the cuts, well, I have to say cuts because that's what they are, in addressing them, that money can be reallocated to some of the things and hopefully put towards doing that and addressing the opening of parks and moving forward with activities for the community at a faster pace than we've moved already.
I think that the, moving forward as far as even looking in the future to a town hall, to public services, needs for land in a facility, and also for opening our parks, those are things that we're gonna have to get real serious about and talk about in funding as far as borrowing money or a bond. So that, that's not, in my mind, of this four hundred thousand dollars that, that, that everybody's saying, oh, this is a big gap. Sound like Facebook. We've got a big gap.
So I've heard three, four, two against. I think the thing that has also come out loud and clear is, at a policy level, we wanna look hard at the services we provide, park, rec, and events, and get our arms around that, and actually understand what the service is. That is a, is a definite. I, I tend to be a realist. There's no way we're gonna open up a park, fix our roads, if we don't sit down in a room and actually figure out the financial management side of this. It's just too expensive. And I, I sat through and, and participated in that transportation summit. There is still a forty-five billion dollar shortfall at the state. So we're not gonna get, we're gonna have to take care of ourselves within our sixty miles with roads. Yes, we'll get the gray byarm. Yes, we got Waxahaw Marvin. Yes, we're getting sixteen. Seventy-five isn't even on a radar screen at this point in time. So if we want to improve anything downtown, we're gonna, we're gonna have to take some of that on ourselves. I, I don't have a thought process other than I think it's time we, we, we actually address the serious nature of where we are. We, we've gotten there because, quite frankly, our ninety-three, seven split on tax base. We, we are a bedroom community, but we like to think we're something else. And what we're now at that breakpoint, to be able to fund what we want in the future. We can continue to operate, but we can't fund the future right now. And so it is, we are where we are. I, I, so.
Well, I think, I have one more thing to say. I think that we, and we've all talked about the Nivens Price buildings, bringing those up to standard and, and putting those on the market, as well as the best use, I think personally, for the corner lot is to sell that as well. And maybe to think about, and Greg, you and I talked about this, of leasing some property that is sitting ninety-nine percent of the time empty, costing the taxpayers dollars in upkeep, insurance, security, lights, water, utilities. So when I look at that and, and if we do sell those, those two areas, buildings, which I think originally were bought and purchased for investment to let them grow in value and then sell them, I think it's time to do it. And we can fund some of these, replace our money, our four hundred dollars, four hundred thousand in, in the fund balance, and then look at future funding through a bond or borrowing for our huge things. Eventually, we're gonna need a town hall. Do I want to spend that kind of money? Probably won't be here by the time that gets there, but the town's gonna need a town hall eventually. And I'm not talking about a huge, big, grand town hall. I'm just talking about a useful building that's functional for the staff. That's coming in the future. That's all.
Yeah, to Commissioner Burns' point, I think what you're also hearing is aggressively, let's look at, at reassessment of our properties and how best to position that so we can generate some dollars there. I think that was unanimous in, in terms of that.
My point of that is to replace that four hundred thousand doesn't need to be a fee on the taxpayers, particularly the ones that it will hurt. And there's no way to, to give a waiver to anyone. That, that is a way, that is another mechanism to do that, rather than go up on fees on the people.
Comments from you? Lisa? Other questions?
I think there's a consensus then, the discussion previously, is reflected in the budget that will be presented for adoption. So that, that is, I understand it, correct me if I'm wrong, is that there was a consensus that final document should include the vehicle fee to fund the STP program, small transportation program, but that there is not interest in having the, either a solid waste fee or a tax amount set aside for the solid waste program. What we would propose in coming back to the board with is amended budget ordinance that would be considered for adoption.
They just went through and altered their thought process. And so, yes, to vehicle, yes, to some form of transportation, I'm sorry, sanitation charge. Solid waste. So.
Was there, I mean, I, maybe I missed that.
Go again. Commissioner Burl?
Eight dollars, yes.
Yes.
No.
No way.
No. Yes, so.
I guess that then leads to the question of, is there a preferred format for that if that's the, the case? Are we looking still at the fee or are we looking at a?
At any.
Amount on the tax rate?
I would, I personally would prefer the tax rate because I will agree with Commissioner Lee. Fees are sometimes regressive. If it's a matter of two, three, three and a half cents, whatever it is, I, I would prefer to do that.
For the vehicle fee or just the sanitation?
Solid waste.
Um, the taxing's, the tax is fine with me on that.
People who are poor and decide how.
Which I miss the best way to go.
Okay.
Okay.
She said tax. You okay with it?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Other questions? Now, help me also, we're getting close to a deadline with the county in terms of what we tell them, what we're doing. How do we, what's our deadline with the county in terms to be able to initiate something July first?
So we are keeping the county apprised of where the discussion is here at the local level. We would certainly inform them tomorrow, kind of where things stand, with the caveat that there's not an adopted budget. They have things that they have to get spun up for, for tax season, and we are cognizant of those dates and are in communication with them. This discussion tonight will be certainly passed along to the county with the caveat, again, that, of course, the budget's not adopted until it's done. They have, they're scheduled their own and will try to be aware of that.
Where are they on their budget?
It has not been adopted. They're in their hearing process and I don't know if it's.
Weeks. Any other comments, questions, discussion? Anything else from us?
Next steps as far as the budget ordinance is, we can, we can amend that. I guess the question is, is what, if any, format do you wish moving forward?
Well, after citizen input tonight too, I think, obviously, there's some things that you may want to amend. Can you assess that and let us know tomorrow?
Sure.
Just in terms of what you recommend. Obviously, we would want an amended budget to reflect what's been discussed and, and agreed upon or reached consensus on, I should say. I think the, I don't know how else to, you'd have a better take on that. Lisa'd have a better take on that as to where, where it is, in terms of what needs to change, et cetera, and just let us all know that tomorrow or this week.
Okay.
Memorial Day. How's that? All right. Anything else? Motion to adjourn the work session? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Did you eat something or have you lost your appetite?